Good afternoon. I'd like to call this meeting the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors back to order for September 11th, 2018. Madam Clerk?
Supervisor Serna?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
Peters?
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Mr. Natoli should arrive momentarily.
Okay. So for your first item, this was held from the consent calendar, item 23, approve the Environmental Management Department program-
Well, if I could just interrupt, that's an item that Supervisor Natoli wants to hear about.
Oh, okay.
Let's just wait for that.
Okay, no problem.
We can take the regular agenda.
Okay. So for your first item-
Okay, excuse me, starting this without him?
He didn't indicate that to me. I know that other item he had interest in.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Item 70, discuss scope of services for Inspector General's contract.
Madam Chair, members of the board, last week I had brought this issue up about the IG's role in the county, and at that point, the board had expressed a desire to have a conversation about the overall scope of service. What I have today is a PowerPoint that details out what the existing scope of service is, and our intent today is to get input from the board members. Our sheriff is here also, and representatives from the Deputy Sheriff's Association, Law Enforcement Management Association are here today. So at the end of this session, what I would like to get is what comments and feedback, and then work with all the parties and bring something back for the board to consider what the future scope ought to look like. So with that, if there's no questions, if PowerPoint. How I would like to conduct this is that it has numerous items that the scope has. What we've prepared is a PowerPoint that has the different points in there, and I can run through all of them, or we can go one by one, whichever the board's desire is at this point.
Maybe pause after each one and see if there are any questions.
So I'm not going to read it verbatim, but I think in the staff report and what's up on the screen is the first item in the scope of service.
Any questions on that? Ms. Frost?
I have a question relating to-
Is your microphone on?
In item one, the statement says that the inspector general may conduct audits of investigatory practices and other audits or inquiries, and may, in exceptional cases, independently investigate any other matter. But then at the end of the statement, it says, "as requested by the sheriff or directed by the Board of Supervisors." So the question I have is, is this- that seems like a conflict, that those two things seem like a conflict. It looks like he's an independent auditor, an independent contractor that can act in circumstances, but then it says, "as requested," that those are two different things. So I wanted to see if I could get some clarification on that.
My intention today is just take the notes and then come back with what the intent was behind it.
I'm sorry, Mr. Kennedy has a question also.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I guess the lawyer in me doesn't like words like "exceptional." What's that mean? So that would have to be fleshed out and made a little clearer.
Oops, went the wrong way. So the next one has, on Article 2, the scope of service, and this has different provisions underneath it. The first item in here, and with the current contract, is this 100 hours monthly is what came into play in the past. With the first OIG, we did not have an hour limitation. This was just something that we did with this article, so with this contract. And as we go forward, we can amend, remove, whatever we need to do with the 100 hours. So I didn't want to leave the board with the impression that that's something that's fixed amount out there. And then it has from A through E is all the different things that the OIG is supposed to do.
Madam Chair-
Oh, sorry, Mr. Natoli?
Yeah, just, I apologize for a late arrival. Just got done the legislative hearing. But so is the intent for the CEO to go through this entirely, or to ask for us to give input as you go page to page? I just wanted to be-
Input as we go through.
Okay.
And then for me to come back in a future date with all the input worked with Sheriff, DSA, Lima, to bring a product back to you.
Okay, so you're looking for input like on the A through M?
A through E at this point. That's what's up on the screen right now.
Okay. All right.
Ms. Frost, are you-
I have a question.
Again, okay.
I also would like to have clarification. There were different conversations I had over the last several days with people. And is the inspector general only over, only working with the sheriff department, or does this include departments within the county? What is his scope of work?
Mr. Natoli?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just, on letter C and D there, I think, as certainly as I've reviewed some of the previous materials and had a chance to talk with the county executive and hear from others, as other members of the board have. I think those need to be more clearly delineated because I think part of what arises out of the situation we currently find ourselves in is that we have C, calling for review completed investigations, and then D, we have make independent determinations regarding investigations. I think that one can derive from that, maybe, you know, particularly D, when we ask about independent determinations about investigations, it doesn't say investigations that are completed, doesn't say investigations by sheriff's department, doesn't say investigations by district attorney's office. And I think it needs to be clear. One, it relates to the expectation, but also then, you know, if there are lines drawn, so to speak, relative to both timelines for reviewing completed investigations, as it says in C, but also then making independent determinations regarding investigations. And if D refers to C, then that, maybe that's the modifier that's important there. But I think is, we talked about this more today and hear from folks, and certainly engage with one another here, and with the sheriff and others who may weigh in on this. Those are important points now, but I know that in my briefing, I actually talked with you about that a bit, because from this, you may be able to derive, you know, certain ideas about the position and what it's called upon to do, and then there's more, obviously, that follows this. But I think the C and D certainly need to, if they're connected and/or independent, i.e. in the way they're stated, then I think there should be a clear understanding going forward. If it relates to timing and to specific investigations and/or complaints that come from the public, things that maybe refer from the Board of Supervisors, from the exec's office, from law enforcement, whoever it may be. And so I guess I would draw attention to that, and I think E certainly has some relevance to that, but C and D seem to me to be ones that we need to be really clear about. Thanks.
Mr. Serna?
Thank you.
Wait, wait. You want to go again?
No, 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 I just, I was just taking mine off.
Oh.
You took mine off, I went back off.
Flashing names on the board here.
We're good.
Thank you. So I apologize, perhaps this, my comment is more germane to the first page of the CEO's presentation. I'm not sure where it belongs, but I don't want to get, I don't want to have him go too far down his presentation without me making mention of something that I think is fundamentally critical to understand, and I'd be curious to know my colleagues' opinions on it. But in looking at, in looking at our charter, county charter, specifically Article 18, under miscellaneous, Section 75, it reads as follows.
Supervisor Serna?
Yes.
If I may. It might be even easier if people could read it, and I believe Flo has a copy that she could put on the overhead.
So while she's doing that, I'll go ahead and read it. But it reads as follows, "All elective officers of the county and all officers appointed by the Board of Supervisors shall cooperate with the said county executive to the end that complete coordination of all officers, services, and employment shall be accomplished in the refusal of any such officer to so cooperate shall be deemed willful misconduct on the part of the officer so refusing." And the reason I think it's important to bring up that reference, the important reference, and perhaps even consider an explicit reference within the scope, is that, you know, kind of the elephant in the room, is that we're here because of a disagreement between the current sheriff and the current IG. And I think to be clear, not just for the benefit of the Board of Supervisors and the CEO's office, but also the public, I think it would be helpful to reference the charter, perhaps, again explicitly in the scope of services, so that all parties, especially that of the CEO's office and the sheriff's department, understands what the, basically the constitution of this county says about the subject.
Mr. Kennedy?
I agree with Mr. Serna, and I too had planned to bring up that part of our charter, so since we're talking about it, I'll address that as well, because I think what it really goes to is, it's crystal clear, and Supervisor Natoli actually brought this up at the last meeting, that, you know, making independent determinations regarding investigations is a critical part of what everybody saw as the IG's role. And that can't be done if a sitting sheriff is in violation of our charter, and violation specifically of Section 75, and not allowing for an independent investigation. So that's not only willful misconduct, but it's a complete breach of what the agreement is, that we see is what the, what the OIG is supposed to, how it's supposed to function.
And just, if I could, put a little finer point on that. I want to be clear, we have received no, at least I have not received yet, a legal opinion from county council's office about this. I think, I have a strong suspicion, two or more of us have asked the question in recent days of county council's office about what this really means, relative to the context of the circumstance we find ourselves. But I want to be clear, this is saying to me that it is incumbent upon the CEO's office, not necessarily the Board of Supervisors, to make sure that he or she is exercising the ability to coordinate and work cooperatively with all elective officers, including the sheriff, when it comes to, as I think it makes mention of, even employment. So that would include, I would assume, contractual employment, such as that of the IG.
Thank you. Ms. Frost?
I would like clarification, I guess, from county council. Can you put that back up, Flo?
That one.
I'm not sure that our sheriff is an elective officer of the county, that he works under the jurisdiction of the county. I'm not sure if this ordinance pertains to our sheriff. It's probably a dumb question, but I thought he, I thought he operated under the legislative branch and independent of the county, that we approved the budget for the sheriff, but-
My understanding is the sheriff is an elective officer of the county. I think that's what we're referring to. Sheriff, DA, and assessor.
Assessor, yeah.
Yeah.
So so the comments that have been made are that if our sheriff refuses, willful, if there's a refusal of cooperation, it's willful misconduct. Are you saying, are you intimating that's-
Not my words, it's the charter's words.
It's what it says.
I'm not sure, I would like, I'm not sure I understand that based on my understanding of the sheriff's elected position. So I want clarification on that.
Yes, we will clarify that, we'll clarify this section and the memo-
I don't think the sheriff works for the county.
There are other provisions in the government code that address the board's inability to interfere with statutory and constitutional duties of the sheriff. And my understanding is that Robin Dravon is in the middle of writing a memo on this subject, so I think that will be forthcoming.
We can get some clarification.
Thank you.
And we will incorporate this into that clarification. Flo, back.
Is that all the questions on this slide?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I think where we left off was C and D needs more scrutiny to understand what it means.
I'm sorry, Mr. Natoli has a question before you leave there.
Yes, sorry, just before you leave that, as I wanted to just, because I think, again, it goes to the essence of some of the reasons we're here discussing this this very day. And that's, as it relates to B, because we talked about tracking and monitoring specific high-profile or serious complaint cases. Complaint cases is one, but a high profile. And so I think when it comes to use of force, or officer-involved shootings, or deaths in one of the correctional facilities, it may be that it would be wise to have some specificity, maybe not all-inclusive, but specificity, so there's some understanding, because, again, as I've read some of the material concerns about how this may have evolved. Obviously, we've had two folks serve in that role, Lee Dean, and then obviously succeeded by Rick Brazil. And then we had the intervening period when we were taking phone calls to some points out of the county for a complaint line. I think that the, that warrants a lot of additional review and probably discussion by this board, and again, obviously in concert with the sheriff. But that goes to the, at least the crux of a portion of why we're here. And, you know, C and D are investigations, but, and I don't know, Mr. Gil, if you want to weigh in at all, but it seems to me that that, some definition around those, because I can tell you, it evolved, obviously, out of, you know, a number of deaths that occurred in the jail in the mid-2000s, and some other complaints that were being received, and how we would channel those as related to activities in the field that may or may not be investigated by IA, the sheriff's department, so internal investigations. So it would seem to me that that needs to be more specific, and it may be that there's a tractor that says, there's some inclusion about other things that may not be anticipated, but I think that we need to be clear about that.
Okay, understood.
Thanks.
Next slide has items from F till M. Again, a lot of these have the nature, I think since we transitioned from what kind of investigation, this gets into something that Supervisor Natoli mentioned, is community forums, some of this is complaint-driven, meeting with the sheriff's outreach, community advisory, citizen complaints. So some of the history behind it, from what I understand, when this was put in place, that there were complaints that came in, and this office assisted the sheriff and the board and the county exec to funnel the complaints, have somebody sit down with folks, explain what the complaints were, and the police procedure in it. So this slide basically spends a lot of time, a lot of the functions there are related to that. And I think the other one was pretty important to the board at that point, from at least from what I read, was for the board and the sheriff at that point, was the early warning system. So that's what's up on the screen, is those kind of functions.
Pause a minute there. Mr. Natoli?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to just really focus it on I in that complement of the scooping here, because I think that that's where there's been tremendous value, and I think it's been valuable for the community, certainly for law enforcement, because, and for many folks involved, either, you know, in, that have an interest and/or direct interest or a direct impact. And I can tell you that, some of the feedback that I've received, that that has been very beneficial over the course of now, you know, nearly 10 years, no, actually nearly 11 years, that, and again, as to how that's done, there's really no stipulation as to how, when that would occur. But I can, you know, can tell you, at least from my conversations with both IGs over time, that both Mr. Dean and Mr. Brazil, you know, I think made it a practice to, either in the midst of investigations and/or as a part of explaining outcomes, engagement of both in the community as well as in, you know, within, you know, the framework when the institutions, that's been very helpful. And I would just say that it's my belief, again, that that's helped to, I think, keep the temperature down a bit with the community as it relates to some of the incidents that do occur, to offer explanations that may go above beyond, sheriff's representative explaining to a family, you know, you know, what transpired and the nature of the investigation. Obviously, the district attorney has a role in those that involve, you know, a death or a certain type of use of force. But I believe that's very critical, that one is to have that independency, but also then to have that party available to explain, to assure folks that there is, you know, independent investigation, but also that there are other structures in place that will deal with concerns and legitimately do so. And so I think that that's very, very important, that role. And again, I think that was part of the complement of, when we entered into this a number of years ago, under a previous sheriff, but certainly now under Sheriff Jones, is that that piece of it is key, because I think that's where you have credibility and trust beyond what people may or may not think about, you know, the Board of Supervisors, the organization that we represent, law enforcement, or one of the institutions, or any particular incident, that that has a very, I think, a calming, but certainly influence, but I think it's one that beyond calming, that it hopefully provides a backdrop of explanation that can explain why certain things are done certain ways, why certain things take a certain amount of time. And I think with the advent, certainly of voice recording and cameras that are on the way, even if our officers aren't outfitted with that, we have them in our cars, and folks, obviously, everybody has a cellphone or some other device, that in the, with the advent of that, that's going to be more critical going forward, to be able to offer an explanation of maybe what you see there, what that means, how that's going to be investigated and so forth. And so I guess now, if I would draw a particular attention to that part of the role, again, I think it's been carried out very ably by the two occupants of the position, you know, in the past, and I think it's going to be important, very, very important in the future, in, I think, providing assurance, additional assurances to folks about the integrity of what we do and protecting, you know, the people of this county.
Yeah, Mr. Serna?
Thank you. So I suspect we probably don't want to get too deep into wordsmithing, so I'm not going to go there on this. But since the CEO is, seems to be sincerely exploring with the board this afternoon what are, in principle, some of the conceptual constructs of a scope of services for an IG, I want to offer this, this idea that under H, that we might, again, I'm not going to offer words here and now, but under H, maybe have something a little broader relative to an operative verb that is more than just attend meetings. I'm thinking coordinate, work with, provide timely information to, and not just what we know as, today, as the sheriff's outreach community advisory board. But I would also have you think, Mr. CEO, about a reference to any future citizen oversight body. I made mention of last week the fact that I'm not that enamored with just having an inspector general, quite frankly. I think it has to work in conjunction with very transparent citizen oversight, and whether that is in the form of what we have today or not, whether it remains that way or not, I think remains to be seen in light of, again, the circumstance we find ourselves. So I would encourage you to think a little more broadly about how that particular section of, of Section Roman numeral two might be a little more inclusive, a little broader to acknowledge that.
Ms. Frost?
I would just like to also respectfully submit that citizens are not really qualified to oversee, but they are qualified to advise based on their situation in their community. I'm not sure a citizen body is qualified to perform oversight on a sheriff department. That's an opinion. I just wanted to publicly state that. And I also wanted to ask that we clarify, who does the OIG report to? Do they report to the Board of Supervisors, or the county executive, or nobody, the people? Do they report to the people? And is there, are they subject to Brown Act? Like, if they do talk to one county supervisor, are they required to provide the information to all the county supervisors? And then I also had a question relating to timing. I've heard a couple different stories about the timing of the reports that come out from the OIG, whereby they do their investigation and they, this report apparently was released prior to the DA's final investigation being completed. And is there any requirement relating to timing, or can they just do their own separate investigation without including the benefit of the sheriff and the DA and including all of it? What is the, I don't know, but is there a requirement? It's a little bit vague.
Understood.
Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you. Since we're on H there, and it mentions the sheriff's outreach community advisory board, you'll recall that we recently changed the ordinance to include the OIG. So, and if you look at the role of that board that was established, I believe 1996, I may be wrong, we're right in that time period, that one of the roles is to take complaints from the community, but also it has an investigatory power and the ability to take testimony from members of the public, and that includes the OIG. So if this sheriff, or any other sheriff, unilaterally decides whether or not the office of OIG is functional or not, not only does that strip it of independence, but it also strips the sheriff's outreach community advisory board of doing what it's charged to do. So I would look, go back and look at that board and weave some of that into this as well.
Anything else before we leave this page?
Roman numeral two just continues some of the stuff we talked about, the independent investigation and re-interview complaints. After that, the current scope of service gets into what the emphasis should be. And on the screen, you see its accountability, constitutional rights. on the screen you see its accountability, comes to constitutional rights, and I'm not going to read every one of them, but that's what we currently have from A to F there.
Ms. Serna?
Just have a, it's more of a question than a suggestion or statement, but under N, when it says directed by the board of supervisors, does that mean directed in open session by a majority of the board? Does it mean directed by a majority of the board in closed session? Does it mean one member of the board can request? Does it mean one member of the board can direct? Can you see where I'm going with this?
Yes, I do, and that is part of what you highlight, is clarification we're going to come back with.
Anyone else on this page?
I have the same concern about exceptional.
Exceptional, okay. This starts getting us to...
Excuse me, just a second, Mr. Natoli?
Yeah, it's on that page, coming up, yeah, sorry. On your next page.
Which page?
Next page coming up.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, then you have a couple more provisions in here. The professional standards is what it stands. Then four and five get into what kind of administrative investigation records, and I think some of the conversation we earlier had about access to facilities is in Article Five of the scope of services. And the comment earlier made about Section 70, I think it was 75, and legal opinion about what rights we have, I think that will get what went in into these two sections, four and five. I'm just prejudging, but that's where that will come into play.
Mr. Natoli?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, just, not so much on the charter piece of that, but on number, on Roman numeral five there, and you just addressed it in part. I think it's going to be important, certainly in light of the current circumstance, that some definition, again, I'm not relating this to the charter conversation as much as to access. If we have an independent inspector general, even if this board had an officer or inspector general that didn't have the component as related to, you know, the structure we have in concert with the elected sheriff of the county, I think what ability, you know, and we certainly talk about institutional facilities, but, you know, what sort of access inspector general would have as relates to county-owned public facilities? And it may not be record access, because obviously those have a certain confidentiality to them and maybe have other protections. But I do think as it relates to facilities, and granted, that's only a piece of it, I mean, obviously, being able to talk with people to investigate complaints, and so, and if there's a complaint about, and we say that, for example, if our inspector general position was more blanketed to a question asked a moment ago, if this board directed we wanted to, for purposes of some other issues that were looking, brought to our attention, we say we want the inspector general to look at something that relates to children or to adult in healthcare facilities, whatever it might, something under our purview, then, you know, what would that mean if this person's a contractor and/or a county employee, but in this case, a contractor? Because it's pretty clear what it says there, it says she'll have unrestricted access.
Not to what?
Yeah, 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 exactly. And so, and, you know, and is that granted, under the authority of the sheriff? If so, then if that's understood, then we need to understand it. But, you know, I think it's important to have very clear definition around it, because obviously there, you know, there are pieces of this when it comes to, to records and to investigative reports and to, you know, personnel interviews and that type of thing. But this talks specifically to facilities, and that's only a piece of, obviously, the investigation. But I think it's very important, Nav, and I've just chatted with you about that, and I think you can sharepoint that out as well. So, thanks.
Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you. I agree with Supervisor Natoli on that point. You know, I would like to give some thought to, or as you're going back and coming back to us and have a discussion about more formalizing some of this, rather than just having it in a scope of services, but actually have official county policy, whether that's a charter change or some other mechanism, that actually takes this beyond just the scope of services of a contractor, but actually embeds that in the way that we do business, particularly when it comes to something like the Section Five there.
So I think what I'm hearing on that one is more of an implementation. These are goals, if you will, but how are they getting implemented, to the question about, came in earlier, if there's a request made from board of supervisors, what's the process we're going to go through to make sure that that is out, is communicated to all, through the IG, sheriff, Lima, DSA? Everybody knows that this is what we're doing, so I think that's an implementation...
And the general public.
And the general public. So that's an implementation-type document. We will give that some thought and some ideas on how to implement this.
Okay. Ms. Frost?
I also think that everyone who works in the county, we kind of, we have our, what's our press person?
The PIO.
PIO, Public Information Officer. If the OIG is having unrestricted access to inform, county information, should there be a protocol in place as to going public with any portion of that information without having a review process to ensure that our messaging, not that we're hiding anything, but more, sometimes when you release something or how you release it can make a difference in how people understand it. And so having our county experts in that field review, should there be some kind of a policy in place regarding dissemination of information?
Okay.
Anything else on this slide?
That doesn't mean censorship or hiding information. That's not what I'm trying to imply.
The way I'm taking the message is that there's two-pronged to this. If there is unrestricted access, and if it's a contractor, there's a confidential piece on county information, and it could be personnel records, could be other things that we have that we will not in due business make those available. I think that's what I'm taking that, to be sensitive to that. Second piece is to make sure that when there is information that's being released, is there a coordination with our public information office on how that's done?
And between the sheriff and the DA and the county, to ensure that we're all, we're all aware, you know, I don't know. Usually we communicate and we try to be aware of what's happening.
Okay.
Brings us to the end, which is just the last couple of provisions in there. It's a critical incident call-out roster, which is something that the sheriff's office has. And the last one is it allows the OIG to use our logo on business cards and brochures to make sure that Sacramento County Office of Inspector General is recognized as a standalone office.
Mr. Natoli?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think six there that, and recognizing that this approach over the last, you know, decade or more has, you know, required, obviously, the cooperation and consent, certainly of the sheriff, as well as obviously the board through the county executive, and not only the employment of the, of the OIG, but certainly in the conduct of responsibilities that have been called out for under the contract. And I guess that one there, again, if I just take it literally, is that, says that he shall be placed on a critical incident call-out roster. Now, if that's at the discretion of the sheriff, because that's something that's maintained by the sheriff in the capacity of deploying responses to, you know, critical calls and to situations that occur in our county, then it needs to say that. But otherwise, it doesn't say that the sheriff, sole discretion, has the ability to say that you come off that list. Now, again, acknowledging what I said a moment ago about cooperation and the consent of the parties here, and so, again, I don't, I want people to be very clear, because if in fact, a situation, if we work our way through this and there's someone else in that position in the future, that there's something that would trigger that, that it doesn't say that, you know, that the sheriff or the working of the board chair or the county executive, it just says that that capacity is there, as long as they're under contract. And currently, there's a valid contract in place, but that particular piece of the responsibility has been extracted along with access to facilities and other things. And so I guess, going to the point about clarity that I've been kind of harping all afternoon here, is that it needs to be clear, so it's understood. And again, if in concert there's concerns, then, you know, either notification to the board chair or, you know, county executive, but if it's unilaterally vested with the sheriff because of either law and/or that's the understanding, I get it, but I, but I think it needs to be crystal clear.
Yeah, Mr. Serna?
Thank you. One last suggestion, it's kind of global. One of the, one of the things that's kind of buried a bit in Section Two of the scope, it's much less pronounced in terms of the expression of how the IG is expected to serve and function when it comes to investigations, is his or her role when it comes to actually performing services that, quite frankly, benefit the sheriff's office, and that is offering recommendations for improved performance, service, what have you, relative to the force of our deputies. I think it's worthy to give some thought, Nav, to perhaps a separate section, separate from investigations, that is about the, kind of the broad topic of the, you know, kind of the widget that the OIG is expected to make for the county, for the people, and for the sheriff himself or herself, which is to offer some, some methods for improvement of service delivery. I think that gets a little lost in the way the scope is currently drafted.
Okay.
Ms. Frost?
When I was in the mortgage business and I got a job, they told me if I quit, I can't compete for a couple of years. Should there be consideration for, for that? Is it adverse, is it a position that might be sensitive to, you know, you have all that information and then you're competing for a position that you're working under at the county? It's just a question I would like to explore. An example would be if the inspector general was going to run for sheriff, would that be considered a conflict of interest?
One item that the board members did bring up, and we did deal with it under the scope of service, even though it wasn't very clear, was that our expectation with both gentlemen that have had this position is that when you're performing as our OIG, you're performing for Sacramento County. That means no outside employment during the term of the contract. And I'm asking for the board, is that something that you'd be interested to see incorporated, or is that, you want to delegate that down, or how, how do you all want to handle that issue?
I'd say, as approved by the, unless it's approved by the CEO, it's hard to say. I mean, if they're going to go work for some television station in Washington, you know, I don't...
Case by case.
Yeah.
I mean, I think with 100 hours a month, a flat restriction on it would not be reasonable.
But I think it needs the approval of...
But yes, and we've been through that, if you recall. We did have a situation in which the OIG did ask whether or not it was appropriate to do some work in a local jurisdiction, and the answer was no, and it wasn't done.
It wasn't just, never got into the scope of service, but what I'm hearing is case by case with, with approval. Okay.
Okay. Any final comments on this part, Mr. Natoli?
Yeah, just, I wanted to go back to page five real quickly, if I could. I think it's an important point, that this position, as created, had the ability for either the sheriff or under direction of the board, and I think it was asked earlier about if that was, you know, either through the board chair or through the action of the board supervisors, but also by request to the sheriff, could monitor or independently investigate any other matter as requested by the sheriff. And so that, you know, I think that was part of the cooperative approach that we were looking at here, that if the elected sheriff and/or his staff brought to him concerns, that, you know, recognizing the position which, you know, he holds currently, is that they have the ability to do that. And I think that's important, and I think that's still important, and that should be part of it. If we're going to approach this on a basis where the idea is for, you know, serving the, you know, the people of this community, but also all the things that are called out for on these pages we've gone, gone through, the sheriff, again, stands for election, but also has a responsibility for overseeing, you know, a very large department, you know, with a big spread of responsibility and certainly risk that's involved, both in the field and in the institutions, that, that to me is a key component, and maybe we need to highlight that, too, so it's understood, that, you know, that if that is shared, and I think, you know, I would just take this back for kind of a final comment, is that, you know, that shared responsibility and role, respecting the roles of both the bodies here, that it worked, you know, it crosses both ways. And so that, that's available as well. And I would, you know, again, say that I think that we should maintain that, but as much as I say that, I think we should then, when it comes to notice or ceasing the services of the person occupies that position, if the circumstance presents itself, again, obviously that's what's before us today, at least that's why we're here, then I think that needs to also reflect that same cooperative approach.
Okay. Thank you. We're going to hear next from Sheriff Jones, but there are a lot of people in the audience that may not have been here before. If you plan to speak on this item, fill out a speaker sheet at the back of the room and give it to the clerk. So Sheriff Scott Jones?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. I appreciate this opportunity to speak with you. I've just got a few comments, and of course, then I'll open it up to whatever questions you might have and provide some clarity, perhaps, on the existing contract or scope of services that you've alluded to in your comments. I think as a threshold matter, it's important to note that the only reason we currently have an inspector general is because I wanted an inspector general. And frankly, the only reason I'm willing to entertain a discussion about another inspector general is because I still want an inspector general. The reality is, a police chief is different than a sheriff. A police chief is accountable to one person. Conversely, a sheriff is, under the truest sense of democracy, accountable to everyone, much like every, every one of you. For me, that's 1.5 million people. A board of supervisors has no authority to impose oversight on a sheriff as an independently-elected constitutional officer or a sheriff's department. The only reason it happens is by concurrence of the board of supervisors and the sheriffs. That's why there are very few sheriffs, myself included in that select group around the state, that have voluntarily acquiesced in that process. Now frankly, there is no crisis of trust in Sacramento County between the sheriff's department and the communities that we serve. Despite the newspaper trying to create a crisis, despite detractors stating that there simply is one, there just is not. We had an independent survey about a year ago that suggests a very high level of satisfaction, trust, and respect between the sheriff's department and the communities we serve. More poignantly perhaps, only three months ago, I handily won an election outright against three opponents by about 30 points or more, one of whom was well politically backed and well-funded. But more importantly, I won in every single city in this county, including the city of Sacramento, and I won in every neighborhood in the county of Sacramento as well. That's less of a reflection on me frankly than it is on people's satisfaction and trust that they have with the sheriff's department. Now that trust is neither given nor accepted lightly. It is earned and maintained by every contact, every day, by the women and men that work for me in the sheriff's department, and I couldn't be more proud of them and the work that they do every single day. I think it's illustrative to point out how we got the current IG. It was pretty uneventful and lackluster without controversy. In fact, at that time, it was Supervisor Serna and myself that just simply sat down, looked at the scope of what we needed, developed a process to select a group of candidates, and when that pool of candidates didn't provide satisfactory results, we tweaked the, tweaked the process and came up with the current model and the current inspector general. That was done without politics. That is not what's happening here. Unfortunately, this has given way to political opportunism and soundbites and posturing that didn't exist before. There is information even from closed session or personal emails that are immediately given to the media. The media is fed and involved in this process, and it just simply shouldn't be. Look, let's face facts. The current inspector general, Mr. Brazil, is done being the inspector general for the sheriff's department. So any ongoing dialogue, and that's not going to change, by the way... So any ongoing dialogue, and that's not going to change, by the way, so any ongoing dialogue about renewing his contract is just silly. You could certainly renew his contract and pay him to do nothing, but I'm not sure how you can justify it, and frankly, I'm not sure how the voters of Sacramento County and the taxpayers of Sacramento County can tolerate it. So our focus frankly should be on, how do we get the next inspector general? My strong recommendation is that we do exactly what we did the last time to pick an inspector general. That's everybody that's relevant in the discussion, sit down at the table, including Lima and the DSA, because they too have to acquiesce involuntary oversight of any model. We put politics aside and we just simply get the job done. Further, because that process could take several months or a year to complete, we don't know, it would be my also strong recommendation that as an interim measure, we reach out to and try and engage Lee Dean, the first and former inspector general that has been alluded to several times today, and if he is willing to contract with him as an as-needed basis, at least minimally for officer-involved shootings, to the extent that he's willing. I would submit that he definitely has the experience to also help develop the criteria and the process to select the next IG, as well as possibly the rating criteria, again, if he's willing. Plus, he would need very little ramp-up time, can be installed as the interim IG, almost, I would submit, almost immediately. So I really would like to get the politics aside. Everybody has been hit on this, everybody's gotten their soundbites in. The editorial board has plenty of fodder for many editorials to come, but right now it's time to put politics aside, take this out of the public venue, sit down at the table with the relevant stakeholders, and get a model that works for the sheriff's department, that works for the board, and the community that we serve. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions, but with the chair's permission, I'd like to respond to the questions surrounding the scope of investigations relative at the sheriff's direction or the board of supervisors' direction. I can give a little historical perspective on that.
We'll wait till you're finished before any questions come up.
What's that?
Go ahead, we'll wait till you're finished before we ask questions.
Okay, so on that, the intent of that was, a couple of things. Number one, we knew that there was, for me at least, there was the big three that I wanted the inspector general for, and they were correctly identified by Supervisor Natale. Officer-involved shootings, significant use of force incidents, and in custody deaths, either in our facility or in a patrol car, that type of thing. But I also wanted the flexibility as sheriff to have him look at different things, for example, our property warehouse. If we had issues out there, and I've engaged the inspector general, both inspector generals, for that purpose. The intent of allowing the board to direct investigations was for other county departments, not the sheriff's departments, because there's sometimes very little to keep an inspector general busy. It's motivated by forces outside of his control, the workload that is, from time to time. So there was, especially with the first inspector general, Lee Dean, had a desire to continuously work, and we, there wanted to be an interest of the county and the board of supervisors, the county executive, to be able to use that inspector general for other county departments as they saw fit. So that's why there's confusion in the language whether monitoring existing investigations and additional investigations that might be directed by me or the board of supervisors. So that's my recollection during the formation of that spot. Happy to respond to questions.
Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you, Sheriff. First of all, you and I can just disagree on the fact that whether or not this is purely political.
Not purely.
It's, I mean, we have a job to do, too, and I can't speak for my colleagues, but I can tell you that over the course of the last couple of weeks, I've gotten quite a bit of concern from constituents that I represent, so, you know, I'm here to represent my constituents.
Hence the temper tantrum comment, I suppose.
Yes, right, exactly. I probably should have used a different word, and after I said it, I regretted it, but yes. I think, temper tantrum or not, an overreaction was certainly what has happened. Because my question to you is, what is the role of the IG in, for example, hypothetically, an officer-involved shooting? Because what I've seen is that there were several officer-involved shootings that have been investigated by the current OIG, and the officers, in his opinion, have been exonerated, and those shoots were considered necessary. Maybe not the right word, but you understand the point.
Understand.
It was not until, you know, in his opinion, he found that there was one that was questionable, that suddenly you lost all faith in him because he didn't agree with you or your department. I find that questionable. He, hang on, I'm almost done, thank you. If not independent, then I don't understand what it is that the OIG is going to do, and if you're unilaterally deciding that it's not a functional body, and that's your decision to make, and you're going to shut them out, what's the role of the OIG?
So the role of the OIG, as was contemplated and agreed to by all the labor unions, myself and the board of supervisors, was to monitor ongoing investigations, be apart from the initial stages of, for example, an officer-involved shooting investigations, to be called out if they so chose to attend the initial stages of the investigation. Throughout the course of that investigation, to monitor the progress of the investigation, and thereafter, look at the sufficiency and completeness of those investigations, and if they had recommendations or concerns as to the sufficiency or completeness, they could bring that to the attention of our executive staff or the relevant stakeholders. I think we had a good relationship with him or the inspector general up to this point, and make recommendations for more thorough investigation or follow-up investigation. But then perhaps to take that investigation and make recommendations, as he has done in the past and did so in this case, about, okay, with the benefit of hindsight, not being in the position that I was in, with the benefit of hindsight, maybe these are things that the department can look at. Now, I can take them or leave them, some have been very valuable, I've always appreciated them. I could agree with them or not, but nonetheless, that's what I expect the inspector general to do. And I do take a little bit of, not offense really, but about the fact that the implication that this was the first critical report, and so this is what threw me over the edge. And the reality is, there's been criticism in every single one of his reports, it wasn't that, it was the departure of the manner and the conclusory nature of this report, as I've spelled out into the letter that I've sent to all the board members, has made its way to the board members, and of course, made its way to the media as well. I think I was very articulate, and it wasn't necessarily that the report was critical, it was the timing of the report, the method, the fact that his analysis was just simply wrong, and used the wrong criteria to come to conclusions that he was ill-qualified to make as a lack of expertise in either the law or being a use-of-force expert that has ever been voir dired or qualified in court.
So you're saying that-
And by the way, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Sure.
But although it's been-
You represent 1.5, I only represent 250.
That means I get five times the, okay, all right. And by the way, although it's been represented many times, that he has many times released officer-involved shooting reports before the DA's findings, that's simply not true. There's been nine reports that he has opined in in officer-involved shootings, seven of which struck a subject. This is the first report ever where we've hit a subject where he has released it before the district attorney's findings, and furthermore, in his own words, that it is the policy of the officer inspector general to wait until after the DA's findings are made, and even in the 2017 annual report, under this latest shooting over which where this controversy started, he said that his report was pending the outcome of the district attorney's report. So again, it wasn't one single thing that caused me the concern enough to protect the integrity of the department and the process, it was the culmination of many different things that simply weighed the scale in favor of me taking the action that I did.
Okay, so as we're not here to discuss the contract of the current OIG, that's, you had opined that you did not want that to be, that's not why we're here today, it's not on the agenda, but what we are to talk about is to discuss the scope of services of the office. You know, so you don't think that this current OIG, and I'm going to use him as an example because I can see others applying for the same position with similar traits and experience, you don't think that the current OIG is qualified to investigate an officer-involved shooting when, after 30-plus years of law enforcement, a chief of police, and frankly, in many circles, considered a national expert on the subject? That wouldn't, to you, that's a layperson?
So first of all, I believe that him investigating independently officer-involved shootings is clearly outside the scope of the inspector general's contract, number one. Number two, if he were, if that were to be one of his areas that he somehow had authorization to do, that's completely different than coming to legal conclusions whether force use was excessive and/or unnecessary, which is the incorrect standard to apply to uses of force. So yeah, he is a nationally recognized expert on many things, and I respect his experience and his expertise on many things, but two things he is not an expert in is he is not a lawyer, he cannot substitute his judgment for that of the district attorney, who is the only relevant person to decide if a shooting was lawful and within the law, and he is not a use-of-force expert. Now, clearly, any one of us can say we are an expert in many things. I like to hold myself out as an expert in a whole bunch of stuff, but that's different than being a court-qualified voir dired expert that can testify in court on such issues, and he is not that. So I would submit that while he does have a tremendous amount of expertise, and again, I don't hate the guy, we're still using him for our internal leadership course. I'm not trying to, he does a lot of training for statewide organizations that I'm involved in. I'm not doing anything to impact those. I think that he can provide an instrumental role in some of those things. But on this particular, he just, he went outside of his lane and caused me too much concern to keep him.
So again, on scope of services for the inspector general going forward, so you're suggesting that it should be a lawyer? Because I can tell you, as a lawyer, I would rather it not be me investigating such incidents. Do you think that's a critical function that should be in the OIG?
No, not at all, other than for perhaps confidentiality issues, but I don't think the person needs to be a lawyer, but I also don't think they, they are not going to be doing their own independent investigations, number one, and number two, they're not going to be taking and monitoring the investigations that exist, either with our agency or another agency if they investigate it, or the district attorney's findings, and substituting their judgment for that of those investigations, and coming to their own conclusions based on those investigations, where it impacts someone or a department or it purports to be more than it really is. So that has nothing to do with someone being a lawyer, it has everything to do with someone keeping within the role that was envisioned for the inspector general.
Okay, I don't want to monopolize, I'm going to ask one more question.
But would just, can I just say, so define use-of-force expert, then? What do you have to be?
Well, anyone could say you're a use-of-force expert, but to me, someone that is qualified to opine in a very public way would have to be someone that has either demonstrated an expertise in the use of force and has been qualified in court. In other words, they've had the opportunity to be voir dired and qualified as a use-of-force expert in court. To my knowledge, that's never happened.
Okay, thank you. You had one more question?
Yeah, one more question, and actually, two-part question. One is, you believe that the charter applies to yourself as well as the sheriff's department, I would assume?
I have no idea, but it's, I mean, the provision clearly can't contemplate everything that a county executive or a board would ask me to do. I mean, it's only relevant and applicable for things that the board has the authority to impose upon me. So if you're suggesting that whatever you guys decide to do with the sheriff's department, I'm somehow bound by that county charter, or I'm willfully misconduct.
So you don't find, you don't think you're bound by the county charter?
Of course I'm bound by the county charter. Alls I'm saying is, in such broad language, if that does apply to me, you can't simply suggest that everything the board or an individual board member or the board collectively could impose upon me or suggest that I have to cooperate with, that I would be forced to just because of that county charter, even though it goes outside the bounds of the government code and my role as an independently-elected constitutional officer. So to me, in a plain reading of that, that means things that are required for the efficient running of governmental and county services, such as preparing budgets and things like that, for the crossover of information and cooperation. But clearly, you can't suggest that you could just tell me I have to do anything, and because of that county charter, I'm obligated to do it, or I'm willfully misconduct. This, if you're asking me or imposing of something that is outside the bounds of what I'm willing, able, or by law, lawfully obligated to accept, then that would have no relevance for that purpose.
So if the county executive at the direction of the board were to tell you, you know, you need to cooperate with the OIG in investigations, and you say no, and you shut the doors, as you have, you don't find that's willful misconduct under the charter?
I clearly do not.
Okay.
Mr. Serna?
Thank you. So I think you've come to know me, Sheriff, as being fairly blunt at times, so this is going to be one of those times. I'm not confident at all that an independent office of inspector general is going to work under your administration. You heard me mention during the conversation about scope of services that I'm interested in perhaps some other model. I just like, I have one question, I'd like to understand from you whether or not you're interested in any other models that you know of, that you respect around the state, around the nation, that aren't inspector general-centric, that add some element of transparency, some benefit for the public as to the mission that we're trying to accomplish currently with an inspector general?
Well, I wouldn't say that I'm an expert on what models are out there, I haven't researched it, but I think the short answer to the question is yes, I'd be wide open to those discussions. I disagree with you from the sense that I think this current inspector general function can work as it's worked for not only my administration, but for Sheriff McGinnis before me, who had the first inspector general. It's worked just fine and has engendered a high degree of trust, not only from this board, but from the public as well, and it's helped maintain a very positive place for the sheriff's department and the communities we serve. The inspector general has played a role in that. So I would hope that in your desire to abandon this inspector general model for something greater, for something that you perceive will be a greater level of oversight and transparency, that you don't find yourself in a position where we have nothing, which very well could be the outcome. I don't want to have nothing, I want to have this IG, I think I was very clear with that.
I can guarantee you, we're not going to have nothing.
Okay, well, I mean, the point is, I could have nothing, and I don't want that. I want something. And so I think the inspector general, the model as it exists, as it was understood in the beginning, not necessarily with now, with the critical hindsight of some of the verbiage that we can do now, because we're not nearly as collegial as we were back then, I think that model can work, and again, the board could certainly try and impose something greater, and I will resist it, so I don't know why we just don't work on what we can.
I would love to believe you, Sheriff, that the current model could work based on what you just cited. I can't, and the reason is, what happens if we go down the path of selecting both an interim and a permanent IG, and that inspector general exercises some of the same discretion that this inspector general exercised, and we find ourselves back here, you just mentioned, you got elected in the primary to fresh four years, find ourselves back here in two years, 18 months, and you don't like the result of that inspector general's report?
Well, the same thing could happen in the reverse. You could get concerned that whoever we pick is too close to the sheriff's department, giving us a pass on everything. So, you know, clearly, that goes to the selection criteria and the process, which again, I would suggest that we use someone outside, independent of politics, such as Lee Dean, who would be very well-suited to do something.
It's a great point, someone that's too close to the sheriff's office. So why not explore other hybrid approaches that would really focus on making sure that doesn't happen, at the same time, provide our constituents, yours included, what they quite frankly have been begging for over the last couple of weeks, which is greater transparency?
Well, I'm not sure the entire county's been begging for transparency, but I will say that-
It's about 12 to 1 in terms of the emails and phone calls that I've been getting.
Oh, really? I get a lot of emails, too, but nonetheless, that's my job. My job is to create a level of trust and be able to do my job and make it easier for all 2,100 people that work for me to do their job. And to do that, I do believe that I have a very high degree of trust with the community and transparency. It may not be the exact type of transparency or model that you would like to see, but what we have is working very, very well. Now, can that be enhanced? Absolutely. But the best person to be able to enhance the relationship between the sheriff's department and the communities we serve is not any one of you, it's me, as the sheriff. And if I can't do it, then the response is that the voters vote me out and find somebody else who can.
So basically, you're saying my response to those concerned citizens that have approached my office, asked me to do many things and explore many ideas in light of this circumstance, is to say, no, sheriff tells me it's not my position to get involved?
I don't think I said any of that, and plus, I was very clear saying I would be open to exploring other models, but I have to be very clear about it.
I think you've stressed several times already today that you believe very firmly that it's a unilateral responsibility.
That is one of my responsibilities as sheriff. That's independent of whatever else we come up with in terms of either another IG or some other model that we can discuss. But it is my job to create that transparency and trust with the community, which I've done for eight years.
And that necessarily, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm hearing you say that necessarily means that excludes this board?
I don't recall saying that. I just said that the person best equipped to have a relationship from the sheriff's to build and maintain the level of trust and cooperative, cooperation between the sheriff's department and the community is the sheriff, not a board member.
I understand.
I've not said that, I've not said that the transparency-
I don't disagree with that.
Is unclear.
I don't disagree with that at all, but the practical matter is that when something happens that our common constituency disagrees with, that is an incident or an issue that is under your oversight, we get contact by our common constituents, probably- our common constituents, probably some of the same constituents you hear from as well. And so, because of that practical circumstance, I think it's kind of foolish, quite frankly, for any of us, any of the six of us, to think that one is completely unilateral from the other, and I keep on hearing that theme in what you're saying.
I'm not saying anything is unilateral. I'm just saying there is a model that works, that has worked for eight years of my administration, plus whatever many years of the prior sheriff's administration. So, I mean, I could levy the same criticism back at the board, saying, well, what you're trying to do is something unilateral as well. You're trying to develop what you think is the best model of transparency and best mechanism and machine to get us to a place of transparency for the department. And I'm just saying neither one will work. Me having absolute unilateral decision or discretion on whatever model is not the, won't work any more than you guys having unilateral discretion.
And that's why I asked my original question about whether or not you thought there were other models.
Okay, I think we can agree you disagree. So if we could maybe move on to a different kind of question, Mr. Natale?
Yeah, not so much a question, but just certainly listening to the exchange here, certainly appreciate the comments, both from the DA's, certainly from the sheriff as well. I guess I kind of bring this back a bit to, you know, the situation we find ourselves in right now, and that is, is that for nearly 11 years now, we've had a model that, you know, has from all appearances and from comments made from, you know, from both sides of the podium, and DA's here, has worked pretty well. And I think to the point you made, Sheriff Jones, and you made it just a moment ago, obviously, a lot of responsibility is borne by the sheriff, but it's borne by the board's supervisors, and I know certainly from, you know, standing for election, but certainly from the standpoint of the deliberations that go on in these chambers about resources for, to allow, you know, the men and women of the second, kind of sheriff's department to have the resources they need to do their job to protect the citizens that we all represent, and that's a very important piece of it. And part of that, then, is the trust and respect, hopefully, that people show for the job that's done and performed, you know, on a 24/7 basis, 365 days a year. And I think we're well-served by the sheriff's department and the people who then put their lives on the line each and every day for each and every one of us in different situations. But I guess, I want to bring this back to, you know, what we're, what I can see the core to here is that if we're going to go forward, maintain that trust and confidence, recognizing a cooperative arrangement, that I think certainly reflects the personalities both here amongst the five of us, and certainly the sheriff, in the sense that, again, we, you know, we answer to a common constituency, and I think we all take those jobs seriously. So what I'd like to get us to, and I think part of the comments that, at least I offered today earlier, when we're kind of going through the portions of the things that we like to see, is that whether it's this model or some other model that folks agree upon, I believe we need to have that independent opportunity to, again, hopefully work cooperatively, but if there are times when, and again, this board gets called out time to time about the way we perform our jobs, and, you know, are we giving enough resources for this? Are we, do we care enough about this segment of our constituency? So I think that independent review is very important, and I've heard you say the same. So I guess what I'd like to bring it back to, though, is that I think it's imperative that that position be occupied, and that we have a party that we all have confidence in, and the community can have confidence in, because otherwise, I think what it looks like, to certain, to those that are watching these proceedings, but to the general public, that, you know, it worked, it worked well, an incident that precipitated where we are today, and now it doesn't work so well anymore. Well, I'm not willing to disregard where we are, and so I guess what I'm going to ask, certainly of Mr. Gill, but our sheriff, and certainly this board, is that we find a way to make this work. I don't think that the public, that we all represent in this community, young or old, rich or poor, would expect anything less from six adults who are elected to serve this county. And so I guess my comment just goes to the point, we got to figure this out, we need to do it quickly. I think it's imperative, because, you know, goodness help us, if something happens tomorrow and somebody questions that, and we don't have an independent, excuse me, review. And so I guess I'm going to stress that we need to get on with the business at hand. We need to find, if this person is the party that we cannot, no longer agree on, then I guess I have to accept that. But we need to find the person, then, that succeeds. You've offered a suggestion. I think we need to get on with it. If there are other models, I wouldn't look at those as well. But time's a-wasted, we need to get on with this, and I think we need to, thank you, Madam Chair, and find a way to get this position filled and to call out the duties and responsibilities, and respect the authorities that are vested with you, with us, and with the party that we employ to do that.
I think that's well said, and I agree with everything, everything you said. The only caveat I'd suggest, that if we do look at other models, which I'm wide open to, that will add to the timeline of doing it, and I think that would increase perhaps the urgency to get an interim measure in place.
Okay, Ms. Frost?
Sheriff Jones, if we, it seems like in the current contract, there were some ambiguities and a little bit of a lack of clarity in some areas. And so my question to you is, if we were to fix that and make clear what the, more clear what the expectations are, do you feel you could reconcile with our current inspector general?
I think that would be time wasted, frankly. But I do think we can, we have to understand that, I think there was no ambiguity about the expectations when the IG was first contemplated, not just with me, but with Sheriff McGinnis before me. You know, unfortunately, when documents are created with everybody's kind of on the same page, we don't look at it with the same criticality that we can now and say, well, what does this mean? What does this mean? And I think that's where we're at. I've made, you know, just some notes on the existing contract to try and clarify some of those points, but I think the timeliness of it, being the end of his contract, my lack of faith, and frankly, the lack of faith that has been expressed to me by the Deputy Sheriff's Association, although they haven't been vocal in this particular thing, I don't believe it's something that can be reconciled with the current inspector general.
Thank you.
Okay, well, we're not to comments yet, but thank you, Sheriff. Can you stay for the--
Sure.
--other comments, in case you have more questions?
I will.
Thank you so much. Do the Deputy Sheriff's Association or Lima wish to make comments? I don't know where they are, can't see past the lights.
They're fine.
Okay. Then we'll come to public speakers. I have three. If you wish to speak on this issue, fill a speaker sheet out at the back of the room. And for those of you unfamiliar with our procedure, we have a two-minute limit on speaking, so just wanted to give you that warning. The first speaker is Nancy Marshall, then Jim Eichener, and Elizabeth McClure. Ms. Marshall?
Good afternoon, and thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your time. I'm a county resident, I'm a county taxpayer, and, full disclosure, a recently retired, almost 30-year county employee. Retirement's a good thing. I called all of your offices last week, after a couple of days of mulling around the not-so-discreet news about the sheriff locking out the inspector general. I had no idea that that issue was being discussed that day in chambers. I thought you guys were all focused on the budget. Some of you responded to my messages, and I thank you. Some background, the department that I worked for, for three decades almost, has had an outside oversight committee for almost 20 years now. It was not always pleasant to have situations reviewed and questions asked of us and our staff, but we were always cooperative and civil. Why? Because we were told that was something that was expected, A, and B, because it was the right thing to do. Lessons I've learned from that, sometimes having fresh eyes look at a situation or an incident can help you see a policy that needs to be changed, a procedure that possibly should be amended, or catch something you missed. Solutions and recommendations have always been a part of the process. I never took it as a gotcha, rather, it was ways to improve. Words have meaning, and as county leadership and the directors of many of our departments, including sheriff's department, we use words frequently. I'd like to review two of those, and these are definitions that came out of the dictionary. Transparency. Quote, openness, accountability, honesty, define government transparency. In a free society, transparency is the government's obligation to share information with its citizens. It is at the heart of how citizens hold their public officials accountable.
Nancy, you're over your two minutes, so if you could be concise.
I'll try.
Thank you.
I thought we had three, but that's okay. In calling, I talked about my concern about the ignoring of the IG and the sheriff's actions about that. I seem to remember him being part of choosing that person. The county has a trust issue with the community it serves, those who pay its salaries and pay for its services, regardless of the thoughts that were just expressed by Sheriff Jones.
Ms. Marshall, could you wind up your comments, please?
Okay. Were any of us in a similar situation to the family's position, knowing the outcome of it, would we call law enforcement? I wouldn't. Would you want answers, if it was your child, niece, nephew, or grandchild? I certainly would. This is not a condemnation of our law enforcement partners.
Thank you.
I work closely with them. Thank you.
Thanks, Detective.
Jim Eichner, sorry if I mispronounced that.
It's one of those names that comes with lots of variations.
I understand that.
Good afternoon, Chair Peters, supervisors, and my friends. I'm Jim Eichner from Carmichael. Madam Chair, I wrote you last week to express my concern about the inspector general. Without effective oversight of the sheriff's department, we risk wasting taxpayer money by paying damages to families harmed by the occasional deputy's poor judgment, and thank you for a prompt reply. I commend the board for establishing the IG office 11 years ago, for negotiations in 2015 to renew it, and for Sheriff Jones' commitment at that time to allow the IG unrestricted access to his facilities. But the Sheriff Jones recently refused to honor his previous commitment, and now Mr. Gill and Chair Peters propose to make the IG entirely subordinate to the sheriff, and thus truly ineffective and a waste of money. I draw your attention to two articles in a recent Christian Science Monitor. The first, on the difficulty of recruiting qualified police officers. One expert said, "The hardest thing is to reconceptualize the profession. Do we celebrate the people who chase the bad guy, kick the door down, and shoot? Or do we celebrate the people who can help eliminate the need for those tactics altogether?" In the second article, the director of the Washington State Criminal Justice Training Commission says, "Part of being a guardian is being a warrior, but we're not training soldiers. We want individuals who have a variety of skills in dealing with the public." Officers get an average of 58 hours of firearms training, but only eight hours for de-escalation tactics. And yet patrol officers face situations every day where three minutes of listening and conversation can bring situations to peaceful resolutions without using weapons. This change of culture is making communities safer around the United States. An effective and independent inspector general is one of the ways we can make Sacramento County safer as well. I ask that you maintain and renew the IG contract, and that you encourage the sheriff to fulfill his commitment to that process. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth McClure?
Thank you, supervisors, for allowing me to speak today. I am a resident of Ms. Peters, District 3, and a physician here in Sacramento for over 20 years. And in reference to our first speaker here from the public, I just want to reiterate, as physicians, we always are reviewed in our outcomes when outcomes are less than ideal. Significant training occurs in best practices with a goal in mind of public safety and the safety of the employees with which we work. So I really feel, and have heard from many of my surrounding neighbors, that we would respectfully ask to continue this relationship with the IG. It engenders trust from your constituents and to the sheriff as well. This working together makes our community better, and we'd like to be the leaders of the nation, rather than a community that people look at and wish there was some other outcome. So we hope that you suggest to the sheriff that we continue the relationship with Rick Brazil. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That is all the speaker requests I have, so we'll come back to board comments. Any further?
Just one more question, Madam Chair.
Mr. Serna has a question.
So I just, what's the next step here, Mr. Gill?
What I plan on doing is meeting with Scott, I mean, with Sheriff Jones, Lehman DSA, with the comments received, bring back a document for the board to look at for scope of service, and then start the process on replacing the existing OIG.
So that'll be a fork-in-the-road decision for this board as to whether or not we want to go down that path of finding an interim or a permanent inspector general, or maybe take a little time, explore other models that might be better for both sheriff's department and the public and the board?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, our plan on doing was focusing on getting the scope of service, get that to the board, so we know what that looks like, and then if there's a different model, working with Sheriff DSA and Lehman, we can have that discussion.
So will that, once that scope of service is back before this board, is the decision to vote up or down the scope of services, or is the decision to go out and wholeheartedly engage a search process for an interim IG?
What I was contemplating was to replace, replacement OIG interim will be step one. Sheriff Jones has recommended Lee Dean in a letter that he gave me a couple of weeks ago, needed to have further discussion with him about, is that the individual, is there anybody else? And then, after that, with discussion with board members and sheriff and Lehman DSA on a permanent or at least an interim process. I think what you brought up today with other models, I do need some time to spend with the sheriff and with the other folks to discuss if there's other models, what kind of timeline does that look like, given that we still have a need for an OIG. So is there an interim step we take while we review the other models? When I come back with Sheriff Jones, that's the discussion we've contemplated on having. I'm going first blush on other models. I was more concentrating on scope of service on the OIG, but that's sort of my first blush on what I would like to do with this.
And then, last question. We will receive from county council's office a more formal legal interpretation of the charter language that both Supervisor Kennedy and I brought to the attention of CEO and the board and the public today?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Frost?
I just want to respond briefly to some of the public comment regarding transparency, and I want to, I want to express that the position of the inspector general is one of great responsibility, and yes, the transparency is imperative, we should all be transparent. But when I think about, some of these situations are more complex than might meet the eye. If you were the officer, and, you know, you're, you're being investigated, and it's still not, the investigation is not complete, and someone comes out with an opinion on, that maybe applies judgment on what you did before the DA and the sheriff have completed their investigation, it could be, it could be harmful to the deputy who's out there protecting us, you know, who was out there trying to protect the community. So there's, there's, justice is a big part, justice is important, too, and letting justice play out. We want to make sure that we're transparent, as transparent as we can be, but sometimes you don't rush to communicate everything until justice has played its course. And I think it's a little more complicated than, than might meet the eye. And I'm hoping, you know, we'll work this out one way or the other. I just wanted to say that, because it's important that you know that every one of us is, and the sheriff, and all the deputies, all of us want transparency. We're trying to achieve justice.
Okay, thank you. I think it's apparent to me that there needs to be a lot more detail in the scope. I think it's apparent to me that there needs to be a lot more detail in the scope. I think it was the sheriff or maybe Mr. Kennedy that said that the scope was contemplated in a different time and in circumstances of everything being perfect. And I think we've, you know, the times have changed, and I think we need a lot more detail in what we do expect from the Inspector General or whatever we decide to call this person. I completely agree that we need to have a civilian look at the, at what's going on in the Sheriff's Department, and I think both sides can learn from each other. I would look to getting an interim in place as soon as possible. We don't know what events might overtake us. And maybe we make the term of the contract, pass the interim, shorter to give us maybe six months to take a look at other, other options if there's a will of the board to look at the other options. So that's what I'm thinking. And for the public, we're not voting on this today. This has been an information gathering session. So I don't see any more questions from the board. Mr. County Executive, anything?
Nope, that's it.
Okay.
How soon will we expect this back, though? I guess I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
I'm, I'm going to try to get this by October 16th, but I need to talk to Scott and the other folks to get this. That's my goal. If I'm not going to meet that deadline, I'll communicate. Back to you.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, then we'll go back to item 23.
Item 23, approve the Environmental Management Department program records, repository retention, and destruction policy.
This was a consent item that was asked to be held over till 2:00. I think, Mr. Nattoli, you had some questions?
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks, Marie, for being back this afternoon, and congratulations this morning on some of the recognition to smaller local businesses and the work with the Environmental Management Department. A few things. One, I did note in the staff report, which I found very interesting, that I guess approximately half, half of all the Public Record Act's requests that come through the county actually come for information that is held with the Environmental Management Department. So I found that number a bit interesting. Didn't read anything into it, but I just thought it was a pretty high proportion. And so before that, though, I, and again, I'd received some correspondence, and my colleague did as well, I know you'd responded to it about a month ago, relative to concern about, you know, what records would be retained and which ones would be held for a period of time and then destroyed, and others that would be permanently retained and/or for different, different varying periods. And you responded, obviously, that's what we have before us today. I had some, a few questions about, I guess we employed a consultant to do this, and so how was it that there were determinations regarding certain periods of time? In some cases, as, as a lowest 24 months, two years, in other cases, permanent in perpetuity, and then everything between two and 50 years? And so I guess, just kind of a basic question, and then I'll ask you some specifics if I could. So could you kind of tell me how, how they arrived at those numbers?
Sure. So when we began to work on this project, which was two years ago, it's a long process, we decided that we needed a retention schedule for our documents since we have 50% of the records requests in the county coming through our department. We looked at three different criteria, working closely with County Council. The government code states that we must keep government records for a minimum of two years. But because we have 34 environmental programs that we implement in Sacramento County, we also had to look at regulation and statutes pertaining to those records in those programs. So some of them were more stringent than the two years. The other criteria that we looked at was called, we call it business need. So we sat down with staff, there are technical references, and we also received County's, Council's input regarding how the records would be looked at, being historically significant. We also looked at groundwater protection. A lot of the requests we receive are from environmental consultants doing Phase One site assessments. They're trying to look at the property to try to figure out what type of environmental impacts has happened on that land. And so records such as underground storage tanks, wells, septic tanks, land use documents, we decided to keep those permanent because that's what they're looking for. There's a lot of land transactions going on, development, and they're always requesting these documents. The other program we looked at keeping permanently was the childhood-led investigations because of their medical nature. We decided we better keep those permanently.
Okay. So we were, reference to the land use documentation, so all septic records, all well logs, and anything that pertains to, I guess, to land use, although I did note, and that was one of the things I was going to ask about, so I guess I go right to that, on the last page there is, are some land use documents that, with regards to staff reports and subdivision review committee notes that you're only going to retain for 10 years? And I, I guess I questioned why that when you had permanent in the other categories, and there was one that you're going to remove altogether, certified receipts? And so I guess...
Yes, I asked my staff person on the certified receipts. He doesn't get any. So he hasn't had any. We have no record of receiving those because all the land use documents we receive is through planning.
Okay.
We don't get the little certified green cards on mail.
Okay. All right, then answer that. So how about the staff reports? Why wouldn't we retain that? I can tell you that there are times when 10 years can pass pretty quickly, and folks might look for a staff report, because that does embody then either work that was done by you or your staff that would be retained. And so why wouldn't you keep that permanently?
According to the person working there now, he did not feel the need that he needed it more than 10 years. Most of the comments that he makes are attached to the land use document that gets sent back to planning.
Okay. Well, that's one of those, I think we ought to take a look at, because, and I appreciate the value that's added by the persons there, and that's, that's worth a lot in my consideration. But I still think that that may be something that we want to take, take a look at. I see, Mr. Gill, you're going to weigh in?
That's what I was going to say. We'll look into that.
Yeah, we can look at it.
Okay.
And there, the staff reports, there is, with Clerk's Office, we do have a record-keeping there too, and we just need to cross-reference what those two are.
Right. And subdivision review committee reports, I think, may have been sketchier in years past. That was more formalized when we did some zoning code updates. So I just think it's important that sometimes if you have it in one or two or three places, not just you want to be redundant and just hang on to records, but, you know, I, I don't know how many of those you have, but it would seem to me that that would be important, particularly for some of the things that Marie outlined that related to requesting information. Let me ask one other more general question. In some cases, though, for complaint forms, we retain them for five years. I see that for, I find it odd that for public schools, we retain them for five years, but for private schools, we retain them for three years. That for labor camps and hotels and motel complaints, we retain those for three years, and then you go down to other categories and retain them for five years. So who makes the determination of why three is important versus five for complaints?
We asked for input from the staff. I'd have to see if there's a code reference right here. You kind of rattled them off fast. But we look at the code to see what does the code state? And then we also look at what is the business need, meaning is there really going to be, is there really a lot of requests for those type of documents? How long, how often do we get asked for them?
Okay. I guess for me, I guess I would come out just a little differently. I mean, that's important, because if you're just holding on to something, nobody ever asks for it, then I guess you assume that it's not needed. I would think that you would come at it from the standpoint of retention, not just within the law, or how many times you get it requested, but, you know, what value this would add in the event that there were, and you did some of that.
Historical significance is one that we looked at.
Okay.
Like we said, impact to groundwater, those were really high, permanent. If it wasn't any of those, we looked at other regulations to see what might be related to that. For instance, stormwater, 50 years. Well, the state does stormwater inspections also, so we kind of dovetail with them. So those might be kept longer than, let's say, another program.
Okay. Well, again, not to take a lot of time today, and you've given some insight into, you know, what logic went there. I guess I would just maybe ask, in what I'd been asked to approve this today, but when it comes to complaints, and again, again, the distinction, I saw a very low distinction between private and public school, except for, in one case, you only retain them for three years, and the other one, you retain for five. Now, maybe there's something in the state ed code that says you have to keep for public schools for five years. But if there's exposure to certain, you know, things that are inspected by environmental management, or that you respond to for, for, you know, food preparation, or for other, you know, storage of materials or whatever. Again, what I take from this, though, is that you've got this big body of information and that you're going to, we're going to go and, and we're going to destroy a lot of records by virtue of this action, ones that we're saying we no longer need. I don't know how far they go back. And before you do that, because once you destroy them, they're lost, they're gone, and maybe that's a good thing, you know, don't clutter up your office. On the other hand, you know, kind of the insight as to what we're doing here in recognizing the value for septic and wells and groundwater and some of those things, this is really a public protection effort, and you do a good job of it, you and your department. And I guess some of that for background for future investigations, and not just based upon who asked for it, but does it make sense to retain it? Because you may be the only, to your point about water quality, you may have redundant state and other agencies that have that information, but if you're the only agency to receive some of these, and that's it, and it goes away.
We look at that also. We weigh that out.
And so you did, each and every case, every category, you went through that.
Yes, because the movement with the state in our state programs that, that have oversight, let's say, are hazardous materials programs, they are retaining the, the information that we send to them. So it's like a redundant...
Yeah, okay, I get that. Okay. So in those cases where you're going to have short periods of time, most of those cases, there's a backup source that's being, that's retaining that, that retains that information?
Yes. The state has one for the, all the hazardous materials programs we have, which are six. Drinking water, we have to submit our results to the state. So there's a lot of programs where we have to submit our information to state agencies.
What about noise complaints, of a local one?
Noise, no.
Okay. But we're going to destroy those records within five years. Could we put this over for a couple of weeks? Is there any imperative? Maybe I can spend a little more time?
Yeah, that's fine.
So again, I didn't want to take a lot of board time here, and I know, and again, your response was helpful a few weeks ago, but I did examine it and talked to Mr. Gill about that. So if you'd be okay, Madam Chair, maybe we continue. Okay. Put this over to 25th?
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Side move and continue this item to 25th.
Okay. Please vote. Oh, there's, I'll second. Please vote.
Thanks.
unanimous vote.
Maybe we can set a meeting now.
Madam Clerk, I'll be leaving now. I'm going to recuse myself from this item.
Thank you. Item number 71, request to adopt...
Take a deep breath.
Request to adopt the South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan, Sequa Finding of Fact Aquatic Resource Program implementing resolution, next study, and authorization to execute the implementing agreement. Introduce aquatic protection ordinance adding Chapter 16.135, Section 16.135.1 through 16.135.110 to Title 16 of the Sacramento County Code and continue for adoption. And introduce the fee ordinance in adding Chapter 22.45, Sections 22.45.1 through 22.45.102 to Title 22 of the Sacramento County Code and continue for adoption.
Can you repeat that?
Good afternoon, members of the board. LeAnn Moffett, your county planning director. I do not have a PowerPoint, but I do have a presentation to give you. The South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan was before your board on August 8th. At that hearing, you heard a full presentation by Bill Zebraun, who is the program manager for the various plan partners. So I'm not going to revisit all of that. Just to remind you, however, the plan partners include Sacramento County, County Water Agency, the cities of Rancho Cudavah and Galt, the Southeast Connector, and regional sanitation, and our federal and state permitting agencies, our U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, California Department of Fish and Wildlife, U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, and the Regional Water Quality Control Board. We have a whole variety of staff, of our plan partner consultants, some of the representatives of the plan partners and the federal and state agencies here. I did thorough introductions last time. I will forego that, but I do want to thank them for coming and let you know that they, many of them are here today if they were to be needed. We took testimony at the August 8th hearing. You heard from Jennifer Norris with U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and Mike Jewell with Army Corps of Engineers. We had 10 speakers in support of the plan, including representatives of a number of key environmental agencies and business interests. We had four speakers testify with either concerns or opposition, including some agricultural interests. At the end of the hearing, the board narrowed down three major areas for staff to report back on, and that is the focus of the rest of my presentation. The first of those three had to do with some questions about the boundary and the history of the boundary, first having to do with Rancho Marietta. So we did go back to some individuals who had participated in very early discussions on the formation of the HCP back in like the mid-'90s. And at that time, Rancho Marietta was not included, was felt to have oak canopy resources that were otherwise protected by policy, and that the area lacked vernal pool resources that were a focus of the HCP. And we never really revisited that decision from the mid-'90s, and so it was carved out and is not included. We also had a question about why we have included a number of very urbanized areas, and that is because we do feel that there's potential to permit infrastructure projects such as roads or drainage improvements to the benefit of those projects, even though they are in highly urbanized areas. And during the briefings, I was also asked a question about what would happen if an area that's included in the HCP were to be annexed by a city? And if, if that were the development project within that city, would not have to participate in the HCP. They could participate if there was a benefit as a special participating entity under the authority of, such as the county. The key topic that, that we have spent much of our focus on since the hearing has been the topic of governance. There were a number of concerns expressed, and I would like to refer you to Table 1 in the board report as the best summary of the changes that we have made to the governance structure. I also, so on the first part of that, in the first sort of row, we talk about the South Sacramento Conservation Agency governing body, and that reflects the board discussion of adding a fourth board member. What we will need to do in the future, and which is not before you today, and is not in the materials that you will be adopting, but we will need to amend the Joint Exercise of Powers Agreement, and that will have to be readopted by the county board and by the city councils of Rancho Cudavah and Galt. And I do want to note, again, not for today's discussion, but we do expect there is a lack of agreement with regard to some provisions that we may need to talk about at least in that Joint Exercise of Powers Agreement with regard to quorum and voting. So that will be a topic for future discussion.
Regarding what? I'm sorry, regard to what?
To quorum and voting provisions, if we do wish to open those up. But moving on, the key part of this is really the change in the middle of the middle area, which is the Implementation Review Committee. And this is where we have modified the provisions to address some of the concerns that was, were raised back on August 8th. On the left, we had originally five members, all of whom represented public entities. And in the revised version, we have seven voting members, three from public entities and four from sort of non-public entities, two which would represent agriculture, one rangeland, sort of the animal side of the house, and one cropland, or the plant side of the house, one environmental interest, and one development interest. So that Implementation Review Committee would be a Brown Act group, and they would make, they would have some authorities, and they would make recommendations on other instances to the governing bodies, sort of like in the planning world, how the Planning Commission works. We did retain the Technical Advisory Committee because that's where the, a lot of the science and where technical matters happen, that's where the representatives of the regulatory agencies sit, and we do have reference to the fact that we may be able to create some ad hoc subcommittees if there's some specific technical, scientific issue that needs to go be studied. We can create a subcommittee to go work on that. And then finally, the third topic you asked us to report back on, that is in your board report, has to do with county general plan agricultural policies. This is not directly part of today's plan adoption, and it does not modify any of the provisions of the plan. But we did give you some information about general plan policy and the agricultural element, and in how it does allow the board to consider the mitigation land provided in accordance with a habitat conservation plan as meeting... with a habitat conservation plan as meeting the requirements of this section, including land outside of Sacramento County. So essentially, if a developer needs to, is developing 100 acres, they acquire 100 acres of mitigation land right now, the Board can allow that to satisfy both the habitat requirements as well as the agricultural requirements. And so there was discussion, some discussion about that. We did go back to the hearing process for when we adopted the agricultural element, and much of the focus of that discussion was really on what sort of land types should be subject to mitigation. There was reference to this stacking issue, as we call it, and there was acceptance of this policy language, but that wasn't really the focus of the discussion when we adopted the agricultural element. We also provided you with some information from other jurisdictions. We did look at several nearby counties, and we have some report back on that. I think staff are, in summary, we would stand ready to study this further and return with the report back. We've also communicated with the Ed Commissioner's Office, and they are prepared to assist us as well, and they are monitoring today's discussion on this item. Any questions on those three?
Supervisor Tolle. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. LeAnn, thanks for summarizing your report and for your work obviously done over the last few weeks on this. Maybe kind of just walking down through the three items as you covered them in the order that you covered them. As relates to the governance piece of this, the actions before today, you said, does not incorporate the structure because it requires the entities to obviously revise the JPA agreement. And then you mentioned something about quorum, maybe those are some details that fall behind, obviously, if you change the number of members and/or, I guess, requirements that certain people be present in order for actions to be taken. So how is it that this gets then, if we're asked to take an action that sets a motion to the adoption of the HCP today, what assurances do we have that this gets put in place?
Let me correct what I said. I obviously didn't explain that very well. Yes, the information in the Board Report and in Table 1 will go into the plan.
Okay.
Yes, so one of the.
I thought you told me that yesterday in briefing, that's why, yeah.
One of the specific items in the staff recommendations is to modify the plan to incorporate the provisions of Table 1. What is not in the plan are the details that are in the JPA agreement having to do with how the JPA works. So those provisions are not, are whatnot, are not before you today and are not in the plan. But yes, this component, we are asking you for direction to amend that into the plan.
And I thought an important piece of information, as you pointed out here, I think as relates to, I think some of the constructs certainly of the governing board, but also the Implementation Review Committee, I think in the structuring that 95% of the plant preserves are in the unincorporated county, and about 77%, if I take your calculation correct, were of those areas that be impacted, that will have to mitigate for, are in the unincorporated area as well, at least as it's currently denoted with the city boundaries and so forth, so.
Yes, those are our projections.
Okay. Then this point about the, and I recognize that, because you've been very clear about it, that the general plan discussion would require us coming back. And one of the things that I noted, and you pointed it out, but I wanted to make sure it's clear, that coming forward from the general plan adoption in 2011, the Board Supervisors, the word is there, may consider the mitigation land provided in accordance with HCP as meeting the requirements of the section, including land outside of Sacramento County. And the portion, I think we heard comments on, and again, today, related certainly to in-county mitigation, and certainly whether or not full credit for stacking when there are certain obligations that come with a conservation easement that may restrict either the types of crops and/or, you know, under a management plan, certain types of farming practices that would, might restrict the ability for the farmer and a rancher on that particular piece of property. And so how do you, in this intervening time, and we can, I guess I'm going to ask in a moment, get this back to us quickly, but how is that being administered currently? Because if I recall from a conversation with you some time ago, that that may has been interpreted to be that we are doing that and just allowing for it, and it doesn't require review by this Board, is that correct?
I think most of the projects that have had significant, that are large enough to trigger the requirement and have had sequo, have typically been before the Board. But we do have projects coming forward to the Board that are assuming that they can, you know, simply do a one-to-one ratio for both, and so.
Okay. Well, and I think it's important, again, you know, and maybe some of those folks may be represented in the audience today or not, but I, I think, as your research has shown, which you didn't touch on, but you've talked with the joint jurisdictions, and again, it's kind of all over the map as it relates to how it's being done, but I know that comments we heard from some of the farm representatives was an approach that San Joaquin County has taken, and I think you investigated that further and looked at Yuba and Yolo, and Yolo obviously having very recently adopted theirs and how they approached it. So I think it's all good for consideration, maybe somebody get some water for LeAnn, for consideration by this Board. I guess I would ask and maybe look to you, LeAnn, and to, is this something we could have back to us before the end of the calendar year with a robust discussion before this Board?
Yes.
Okay. Because I think that's important to have us take a look at this, particularly with pending projects. And I think engaging certainly the Ed Commissioner, I know it's been suggested that we have an agricultural advisory committee that's now functioning, and I think a lot of those seats have been filled. We haven't really utilized them because we didn't have it for a number of years. We have maybe utilized the services of that body and certainly anybody else who wants to be involved in it. But I think this is a critical piece, and certainly I think it's key to strategies for farmland preservation, in addition to anything that's embodied, obviously, in the Habitat Conservation Plan that relates more to habitat, certainly has some farming values associated with that. Okay. Lastly, I would just want to ask you about, and we got a letter, I don't know if you saw it, as recently as today, from a Harold resident, but someone who serves on the Southeast Area CPAC regarding, have you seen that, LeAnn?
I have not.
From, and it relates to, it's an ag rez, but also I think the question raised in that letter is what was, this party said rumored forced permit requirements, says these permits are to address take of species for property owners who will inevitably end up as neighboring properties to the lands that will comprise the HCP. And so it kind of goes to the ag rez question. I know that that was the Consumer CPAC, they registered their concern and opposition to the plan because they felt, at least in part, that, you know, by just taking in all the ag rez areas, that it, you know, it puts another layer, if nothing else, of obviously of land use, kind of overall that, even if it may not directly affect those lands. Could you maybe take, why we take some testimony, take a look at this letter and maybe respond to it before we close the hearing, I think it would be important to.
Well, let me give it a try.
Okay.
Mine has the coughing fit, which I seem to be having.
Sorry, I had that earlier, so sorry to give it to you.
It's not our intent to affect ag rez. And certainly, the way it works right now is there may be a preserve next to ag rez anyway, so I don't think this changes how mitigation is happening in the county, either with or without the HCP.
Okay. No, you've said it before, I think you might want to take a look at this, and just the information here is about compelling permitting fees, but also neighbors that are adjacent to HCP properties, and we've talked about safe harbors and such, and provisions for doing that. Just want to be clear, because there continues to be nervousness in the ag rez community by individuals, but I think collectively, as, you know, expressed by the recommendation for denial of the plan, or that this Board not approve the plan, again, at least in part because of concerns about impacts to ag rez communities existing, but maybe in the future as well. So, and I want to express that because obviously that's been part of what I've taken into consideration and deliberations on this, so. Okay, that's all I have for right now. I'll give it to the letter, and then you can maybe respond, Mr. Chair, before we're done.
Supervisor Frost.
LeAnn, I wanted to ask about the, if we adopt the, if all the cities do not concur and adopt the plan, what is the next step?
I think, I don't expect lack of adoption of the plan. I think what I was trying to get into the record is there may need to be more discussion if we open up the JPA agreement. There are protections in the current version of the agreement where the cities have to participate in certain votes. And so a majority of the county cannot overrule that, and that's the area that's not in the plan that we may need to have further discussions on.
Okay, so this is really just a beginning, that we're still working our way through it?
Yeah, with regard to the details of how the JPA operates, that's the part we need to discuss more, where I do expect if we want to reopen some of those provisions, we will not have agreement from some of the cities.
And on the Implementation Committee, we took the Sacramento County Water Agency and the Connector out, and they were good with that?
Yes.
And so water considerations would be considered under environmental, or?
Under county.
Under county.
Or county, oh.
Because we all serve on that water agency board.
Right, okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions at this point? All right, then, we do have some cards, I will open the public hearing. And first, we have Lindsey Liebig, Liebig, sorry.
Liebig, you got it right.
I got it right the first time?
Yep, you got it.
The second time I've gotten it wrong.
Good afternoon, and thank you for hearing this matter again. We're very appreciative, I'm Lindsey Liebig from the Sacramento County Farm Bureau. We're very appreciative of all the work that LeAnn and Bill and their team did in bringing together some new governance objectives that answered our concerns that we talked about at the last August hearing, and really looking at having agriculture represented at various levels within that governance structure, and very appreciative of that. Also appreciative of the commitment and the discussion around reopening the general plan and really looking at bolstering those ag mitigation policies, and we'll be looking to really be involved in that, whether it's an advisory capacity, working with the Ag Advisory Committee, or whatever entity begins to oversee that, and to really look at how we can take and have a large ag, that's a very robust ag mitigation type policy that would match this robust habitat conservation policy, and appreciative of all of your time in meeting with us and hearing our concerns and seeing how we can incorporate those in the future. So Sacramento County Farm Bureau still stands opposed to the HCP just on the sheer principles, but I think we've come a long way in the last month and a half, and we're happy to see the progress and work on this plan's future after the decision today. So we appreciate all your time and thank you for hearing our concerns and making those necessary changes that we've asked for. Thank you.
Thank you, Lindsey.
Good afternoon, Board members, Chair Kennedy. My name is Chrissandra Giles, I'm with the North State Building Industry Association, and I appreciate the opportunity to comment this afternoon. Home builders have numerous state and federal agencies that we navigate for wetland and endangered species permits, and the South Sacramento County Habitat Conservation Plan will enable a greater degree of local control and more planning efficiency. The BIA has worked closely with the federal agencies on local and regional plan permitting that conforms with this habitat conservation strategy. It's important for many key residential projects coming forward, and also transportation projects that are in the planning pipeline, and we would urge you to adopt the HCP this afternoon. Any additional delays could impact the project's ability to start construction in the next construction season. Those are only April to October, so timing is really key for the construction community on this issue. The HCP will offer future projects in Sacramento the option to buy mitigation lands that facilitate much-needed growth in this area. And while there will always be challenges in the federal and local permitting process, we believe that the HCP offers a streamlined solution that both the environmental community and the building community agree to, and that's not easy to do. So we appreciate all your thoughtful comment and discussion on this issue, but we certainly hope that you vote today. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chrissandra.
Good evening, my name is Sean Worth. I'm the Conservation Chair for the Motherlode Chapter of the Sierra Club. I'm on the Board of the Environmental Council of Sacramento, and I co-chair their Habitat Subcommittee. Our groups have worked on this from its inception, almost 23 years ago. At its very basis, a compromise, but it was a hard-won compromise with very good, solid biology that was worked out through an uncountable number of meetings. We need this for our region, we need to move from project-by-project mitigations to regional mitigations. We need a regional focus in everything that we do in terms of the way that we manage our area. So we very much encourage you to support and approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no more cards, therefore I will close the public hearing, bring it back to the Board. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. So I just want to point out that we just had something very unusual happen, it doesn't happen very often, almost in any chambers in California. We had a representative from the Building Industry Association come up and support the same thing a representative from the Sierra Club is supportive of. So please note the date and time. So I know that my colleagues are going to follow with their comments, I just wanted to begin mine with a hearty thanks to all of our staff, not just for years of work, but for decades of work, and certainly with all the stakeholder groups, agriculture, the environmental community, certainly the building community, those representing large infrastructure projects in the south part of the county. I think, given my history in a past life, working with various habitat conservation planning efforts, this is one that we can all be very proud of. I think we left no stone unturned in terms of, even up to the very last minute, exploring an even better, more equitable governance structure for those affected. So I'm going to be delighted to support the recommendation today, certainly wait to hear from my colleague, Mr. Nattoli, in whose district most of this conservation plan resides. But I appreciate too his vast leadership on this, not just in the last couple of weeks to get us to this refined point, especially as it relates to governance, but again, over many years and even a couple of decades plus.
Thanks. Any other Board members? Mr. Nattoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate comments from my colleague, Mr. Serna, and certainly will echo much of what he said as it relates to, thanks and appreciation for tremendous amount of work that's gone into this. When you look at the documents, and I know a couple of us received all the binders, and I think probably Sean Worth is probably one of those that can claim credit for, probably read every word of every sentence in most of those documents. Others have certainly contributed to this in many ways, and obviously it's been something that's been, in early years was on again, off again, and as said here previously, it's probably been, worked probably better part of a quarter of a century getting us here. But I do think it's been giving us the opportunity at different times to look at not only how others have done this and this approach, but I think to examine it very thoroughly as has been done, to document the benefits as well as the challenges that are presented in any plan that has the breadth and depth and scope of a plan like this. When you recognize that Sacramento County, just as geographical landmass is near 1,000 square miles, much of the area that is sought for protection because of impacts, either anticipated and/or that have occurred over time, just with the human occupation, and certainly all the various things that go on in daily lives that relate to transportation and drainage and air quality, and certainly homes and businesses, and the built landmass that comes with, again, with growth and development, and yet all the things that make this community and our county very unique. And I think the land form from the tip of Sacramento County, that may not be included in the Habitat Conservation Plan at the northern edge of the Antioch Bridge, all the way to, obviously, to the northern reaches of this county, and certainly the portion that's covered under the South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan, that it's extensive, and again, the body of work reflects that. I think it reflects the interests, both of concern, but also those that would contribute and who are going to bear a part of the obligation then to see to that we have a plan that not only is one that preserves the lands by which the species would thrive, but also it recognizes some recovery. And that's an important piece in all this, is that with the recovery plan, it will require us over time to enact certain management practices that hopefully sustain and contribute to that recovery. I will say too, and just take a couple more moments here, but I think it's been so long that getting here, that it's important to comment on this, that as noted from the three speakers today, a variety of interests represented under the umbrellas of the folks that commented today, but that much of the impact, as it relates to the recovery, but also the set aside of the lands, will occur in some of the more rural areas of the county. There'll be some in the areas that are adjacent to either anticipated development. be some in the areas that are adjacent to either anticipated development, or in areas where we already have development, that we have some protected lands, but in large part it will be in rural portions of the county, and the concern that was expressed, obviously, about, you know, permitting on a, you know, everybody go do their own, go out there and find the lands and get the set asides and obtain the permits from the regulatory agency is one that really provides kind of a mix and match and a hopscotch approach to things, and as I've studied this issue and certainly listened to a lot of folks from a variety of viewpoints, I think that it makes ever better sense, although it's far from perfect because we put this umbrella of the, you know, governmentally administered program, but one that does have the willing seller, willing buyer component into it, it does have the components that relate to, to safe harbor, to the assurance that come from the development side, to the public projects, and nits into that, obviously, the intent of the plan, which is to help the identified species and the landforms that are either challenged and/or maybe on certain lists, hopefully helps them to sustain for generations to come in the community, along with obviously the ability for people to thrive and prosper and have a place to live and to do business. And so I say all that because I think what this does is that it threads together a variety of interests under a regulatory regime that is one that is oftentimes imposed from either state or federal regulators and then have to be carried out at the county level, but at this point in time allows the county and the other entities that are parties to this to have a little more control and say so, and certainly to have some efficiencies that build into that, but also then to work in concert with folks at the very local level, and I think that that prospect in and of itself is encouraging, particularly in light of what looks to be an ever more complicated environmental and regulatory scheme at lots of different levels. So I think that it allows us to have that ability and with competent oversight of, I think, a governance structure that will provide for representation by this body, who collectively represent the entirety of both people in cities, but certainly in the incorporated area, and to have supermajority on that body, but also then to integrate into the implementing committee and with the structured responsibilities to have the other interests, certainly agriculture and two segments of that, the cropland, irrigated cropland and the rangeland, reflecting some of the challenges that, you know, farming and ranching brings certainly in the marketplace, but also respecting then the habitat values that many of those lands offer under a willing, you know, a property owner basis. And I would just note too, that then have the environmental and certainly the building interests as a part of that, I think that makes good sense too, since obviously the development side is going to be contributing in large part, the funds that will provide for the endowment, but also for the work that goes on in this plan. Again, I take a bit of time here to talk about that because I will still tell you that as Lindsey noted from the Farm Bureau and certainly from some of these CPAC members that are appointed by this board, but certainly reside in the areas that I have represented and been given the good fortune representing for all my years on the board supervisors, there's still some hesitancy and concern, and I know that, and if I cast a vote in support of this today, that obviously it goes counter to at least their views as expressed through some of their representative bodies, but I think part of certainly being a representative government and one where I'm called upon, as my colleagues are, to make decisions that, you know, I have to utilize some judgment and certainly do my best to hear people, to try to see to the whatever's before, but certainly in this case, this plan reflects those concerns and offers protections and addresses as best we can some of the things that have been brought forward, and I think we've done a good job in that, I think that some of the work that still will go on with the general plan relates to ag protections and the interface between ag res and where people obviously live and consider that their community as much as somebody who may be farming there for six or seven generations, that we'll have to continue to have those conversations as a board, I think we'll be sensitive to that, I know that certainly I'll do my best to represent those interests as we have those conversations. So with that being said, today I'm prepared to support going forward with the plan, with the recommended actions here, with the understanding, and I'm really a very strong belief that the key to all this though, in the future, long after I've ended my tenure on this board and, you know, probably will be dead by the time this plan permit will expire, 50 years from now, I don't live, propose to live to be 110 years old, so. With that being said, in all seriousness though, this will have a long tail to it, it will be very important going forward, and I think that the governance, which obviously could be addressed in a different way going forward, but that the structure we provide here will provide the basis by which representation for the affected parties, but certainly through the board supervisors, the successors to all of us, and certainly us in our current status, will offer a lot of protection because that is where representation on issues that may arise will occur, and so I have confidence in that, I think we've come a long ways, I thank you, Mr. Gill, certainly Leanne, and other parties for their engagement on that, because to me that was a critical piece, and I think that we're far better served by what's here before, so I would just sum it up then and say that I intend to support this today going forward, and recognizing that it doesn't, you know, fit everybody's idea of what we as a county ought to do, but I think the work reflected here gives me a great deal of confidence that it will be a plan that can be successful, it will be supported, it may be amended and evolve over time, but this one, I think, reflects a lot of good work, and I think will be well served by the plan. Thanks.
We have one more speaker here, Supervisor Frost.
Well, I couldn't let everyone else talk and then not talk myself.
No, you really can.
I'm just going to make it really short. I just want to say thank you to the staff for all your hard work, I know I came in at the last minute, I fully support the HCP and I look forward to working with everybody involved, and so that's it, thank you.
Is there a motion?
Move approval.
I would second. Motion second, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
With Ms. Peters. All right, well, thank you very much, we made history today. We do have a off-agenda speaker, Don Knudsen. Did he leave? Mr. Knudsen? Okay, then we, county executive comments.
No comments.
Board? We're adjourned.